This Wednesday, July 31st, 2019. We open at 7:00 here in the Griffin Meeting Room, Harwich Town Hall. We will have on our agenda the cases that were printed on our agenda sheet. We'll do them one at a time at the appropriate time. Our members of the public will be invited to give input. I do need to advise you, we're being recorded and that recording will then be on the Town, Channel 18 YouTube website in a day or so. I ask the members of the board to please introduce themselves.
Kathleen Muller.
Dean Hedderstedt.
Dave Ryer.
Al Donahue.
James Armstrong.
And Shayla Delaney, Secretary.
Okay, our first case, 2019-26, William H., trustee of the Deerfield Nominee Trust.
That's been delayed.
Yeah, their attorney is delayed, so we're going to pass that case for now and when he becomes available, we'll hear that case. We have another member. Mike, if you could introduce yourself, please.
Mike Capoli.
Okay, so, our next case is Case 2019-27. Mr. Donahue will act as clerk tonight. If you could read that case in for us, please. All right. Robert M. Losch have applied for variance to construct an 80-foot-long retaining wall within the setback. The application pursuant to Code of Harwich, Town of Harwich, 325 Table 2. Area regulations are set forth in Mass. General Law Check of 40A, Section 10. The property is located at 51 John Joseph Road, MAP 62, Parcel P. 13, in RR zoning District. I have several letters here to which I will refer. The first letter is from a adjacent property owner, the Butter, who has requested certain conditions to be placed upon the construction of a wall. The next one is from the building commissioner. And I shall read this one. You're asked me to comment on the pending 51 John Joseph retaining wall, ZBA 21927. The building permit application submitted was to construct a 3'80-foot-long retaining wall on the north side of the property. The retaining wall will be located six inches from the property line. The Town of Harwich zoning bylaws, Section 325, two definitions define a retaining wall as a structure. Table 2, area regulation requires structures in RR zone to be set back 20 feet from the side property line. As the retaining wall does not meet the setback requirements for the property line, the building permit application was denied on May 22, 2019. The property owner has elected to seek relief from the zoning board of appeals. The next letter I have in here is from Kathy Teneglia, Senior Health Agent for the Town of Harwich. I have reviewed the application for a variance for the zoning board of appeals for the project at 51 John Joseph Road. The septic system was installed in 1973 and passed the Title V inspection in 2015. The property is restricted to two-bedroom maximum due to environmental restrictions, zoning two, or zone two, I should say. The health department has issues with the retaining wall provided that no, does not, excuse me, has no issues with the retaining wall provided that no fill material is brought in. The septic system is only permitted to have 36 inches maximum of cover over the septic system components. You should receive, if you should, further information, please do not, please contact the health department. Okay, if the applicant could come forward to the table, please. And if you need another chair, just pull one up, if you would. And voting on this case will be Ms. Muller, Mr. Hedderstedt, me, Mr. Donahue, and Mr. Armstrong. But before you begin your presentation, do you have a certified plot plan for us? Because we're not going to go forward on the basis of a sketch.
I have a plan from an engineer. Which, this is revised plan. Basically, it's not the whole lot, but it's over the wall itself with the new drainage.
That's this one you submitted?
No, this is a revised edition.
Okay.
It was revised two days ago because of the issue with the drainage. It just came up a couple of days ago. So, I'd like to give you a copy of that.
Okay.
Thank you. Basically, as far as the plot plan goes, that's all that's available through the town file.
Well, okay, let me talk to the board before you make your presentation.
Do you want to copy that? Just leaving that, thank you.
I'd like one also.
Yeah, we need one from Ms. Muller.
I could copy if need be.
And for Mr. Armstrong.
Sure.
And if you have one, Mr. Capoli, even though he's not voting, we should, I'm sorry. Yeah, we should have him copy.
Do you need one?
Not right now.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Everybody got one?
Yep, everybody's got one. Thank you, sir, for that. But let me, let me address the board. I mean, one of our requirements is that the applicant provide us a certified plot plan. As you know, that's on the requirement in our application. This applicant is before us for variance and, just speaking for my one vote, I'm not prepared to go forward with a variance on a sketch. We have addressed this issue years ago and that's when we said applicants have to provide a certified plot plan. So, we have a fair view of what's going on on the property.
Having visited the property today, I want to see a plot plan. I was unclear where the property line was. There were two fences, parallel fences.
Right. Mr. Hedderstedt?
It's state.
Wait a minute, let me just talk into the board.
In order to grant a variance, the state requires us to meet certain criteria established in the law. And those such conditions are the shape or topography of the lot, a hardship, and the public good. We need to have the shape or topography information regarding the lot in order to even consider a variance by the state law. So, unless we have that, there's no way we can even consider it.
Mr. Donahue.
I agree with my cohorts, yeah.
Mr. Armstrong.
I agree as well.
Mr. Capoli.
Jason surveyed that.
Yeah, see, it's up to the applicant to engage an engineer to give us a certified plot plan.
Okay, well, I have the property surveyed a couple of years ago, but I don't have any paperwork from that.
Well, we really can't go forward with your application tonight unless we have that.
Yeah, I understand exactly what you're saying. I'm just curious what you do have for a plot plan, because he actually was able to apply for a building permit, which they accepted the plot plan, and then that was denied. But the building inspector was satisfied that he had everything he needed for an application and that's why he then denied it on the grounds of the specs of a retaining wall.
Okay, I don't, we don't have his file, so I don't know, but with your application, you are required, you know, it's very clear on the application form.
Understood, yeah. I didn't know that it wasn't in there.
Yeah.
Like I said, I know that he went through the building department already.
Right.
All they had was the existing one that was in the file.
Right, the only thing we have is a sketch and we really can't go forward with basically a sketch.
Right, that's all they had on file here, which was all I was able to obtain at the time.
Okay, but it's the applicant's obligation to go out and, you're going to have to hire an engineer or surveyor to give you, create a plot plan for your application.
Yep.
So, I would entertain a motion that we continue this case until our next meeting, which I believe is Wednesday, August 28th.
So moved.
And it would be the first case on at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
I will second that motion.
Okay. All in, any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, sir, I'm sorry, but...
There are also stakes still there from where I had it surveyed, down the side and along the back.
Okay, but your surveyor, if you had it surveyed.
Right.
He should be able to update.
Yeah, we'll pull it together.
Oh, yeah, that's no problem.
Yeah, we'll get a call.
So, if you could submit that, next month, August 28th, it'll be the first case on.
Sure.
Sounds good.
Thank you, sorry, but we really need that.
I would like to bring one other thing to your attention. I just repeated to you what the requirements are for the state and thus us to pass a variance. You should be very much aware of that and be ready to answer those, that's those subjects and be prepared to answer any questions regarding that, okay? Just for your own good. Otherwise, you're going to be here for nothing.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure. We have a letter from a rain engineering. I don't know if you have a copy of it, but it addresses all those factors.
We don't.
We don't have that either.
So, we'll make sure that you get that as well.
Right. And the other, the other concern I have, it looks like your wall is already there. Is that wall already built that's there?
What do you mean?
The retaining wall that's already there?
There is no retaining wall.
It's two fences.
Just the fence? Okay.
Yeah, it's just a slope. It's a slope.
I thought that was the wall. I couldn't tell when I went out there if that was the retaining wall.
There was a wall there and I took it out.
Okay.
Because it had dirt against it, it was considered a retaining wall, so I...
Okay. I couldn't tell by looking at it, so I thank you.
It's just a slope.
We'll see you in a month.
Okay, thanks. We will see you next month.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Case number 2019-27. No, that was that case, that 28. I was going to give the... Sorry, we rotated one. Right. So, it's 20, 27. 2019-28.
28 is withdrew.
I was just going to give the continuance date on.
Read it and then we have to vote to continue it.
Right, wait a minute, yes.
We're 2019, 29, right?
No, we're 28, we have to move.
28. We're on 27. We're on 27.
Just a motion to withdraw, to delay.
No, withdraw, to continue.
Continue.
Continue. You're going to make that, right?
Okay, on Case 2019-28, we received a letter from Attorney Singer, representing the Richmond Harbor Real Estate, asking for a continuance of this case.
To October 30th.
Ah, okay, to October 30th, okay. So, I will, I see no problem in moving the case.
I move, we do that. I move, we move it until October 30th, whatever that date is.
Second.
Any discussion by the board? And this one will have Ms. Muller, Mr. Hedderstedt, Mr. Donahue, Mr. Armstrong, Mr. Capoli voting just on that motion to extend to October, whatever the date was.
October 30th.
October 30th.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay, great. 29, I guess.
Yep.
Let's see. May I ask a question of the clerk?
We need a motion with regard to 27 to get a continuance.
Yes, we continue that, okay.
All right. October 30th, is that it?
Continue to October 30th and that will be the second case on the agenda for that night.
Yep, we got two already.
No, we don't have any, we don't have any, anything yet for October 30th.
Right.
The case prior was moved to...
August 28th, yeah.
August, yep.
Okay, Mr. Donahue, we can go to 2019-29.
Case number 2019-29, Wilfred H. Peach and Mary Ann Peach.
Peach.
Peach, okay, thank you. Have applied for special permit to change out decking railing on existing deck, pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of Harwich Town, excuse me, the Section 325, Table 2. Area regulations are set forth in Mass. General Law 48, Section 6. The property is located 11 Lakeside Terrace, MAP 72, Parcel 283, in the RR zoning district.
One piece of correspondence.
One piece of correspondence.
Did I give it to you? No, okay, sorry.
I got it. Okay, yeah.
We have a piece of correspondence from the Senior Health Agent for the Town of Harwich. I have reviewed the application for the special permit from the zoning, from the zoning board of appeals. The project is located 11 Lakeside Terrace. Health Department does not have any septic information on file for this property and therefore requires passing Title V inspection prior to building permit application approval. If it is known that the property is currently served by a cesspool, then the Health Department requires fully compliant upgrade. A building permit application will not be signed off on until the disposal system construction permit is approved by the Health Department. Any further information, please contact the Senior Health Agent, Teneglia.
Okay, if the applicant could please come to the table for us. And before you present this case voting will be Ms. Muller, Mr. Hedderstedt, Mr. Donahue, Mr. Armstrong, and Mr. Capoli. I will not be voting. If you could introduce yourself, please, sir, and present your petition.
Yeah, my name is Wilfred Peach and I've owned the property at 11 Lakeside Terrace since 1986 and the deck that is there was built in 1988. The permit was granted at that point in time, but when we went ahead and wanted to have the decking replaced and the railing replaced and applied for the permit, we discovered that one side of the deck was not meeting the 20-foot setback requirements, which nothing has changed since the deck was built, maybe other than the setback requirements, or maybe there was something. There was nothing in the documentation of the approval that indicated that there was anything special done to gain the approval. So, we're here now to request that we can change out the decking. We now have grandchildren that spend more time here, so of course, the decking being 31, 31-years-old is not the smoothest anymore and my wife is concerned that we're going to have a lot of small kids with splinters, so we were going to replace it with AZAC and of course, doing the decking itself, we also wanted to do the railing because it would look kind of funny with the wooden railing and the AZAC floor.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, Ms. Muller.
Mr. Peach, my first question is, what's the proper spelling of your name? It's spelled three different ways in these papers, Wilfred.
Oh, well, there's a tendency to misspell my first name because a lot of people don't realize that there's an I, there's two Is in the, in the name.
So, it's IED.
It's IED.
Okay.
That is the correct spelling.
Okay, and my second question is, what is the answer to the question posed by the Health Department about a cesspool versus a septic system?
We have no information, well, we do, it's not a cesspool, this is septic system. We just recently had it pumped and the gentleman that came to pump it commented how, on how clean it was. We have never had it inspected because we saw no reason to have it inspected and I'm kind of surprised since there's really no actual construction taking place. The base of the deck is going to be perfectly identical and stay the same as it has been, so the only thing that's changing is the decking and the railing. And it's nowhere near the septic system, so I don't know why it's critical that we now all of a sudden have a septic system plan. I don't, I don't quite understand that.
Can I answer that? That is now just the new regulations with the community development team. The Board of Health doesn't approve any building permits and they have to go through them unless and until they know that a system has been upgraded from cesspool. So, that's why she said you either have to have a, an inspection, a passing inspection for your Title V or an upgrade.
Yeah, so now, instead of having a relatively simple decking replacement, which is not exorbitant in cost, I might be looking at having to bring my system up to Title V requirements? Is that what you're telling me? If I, let's say, making the assumption it doesn't pass.
You'll, if you have a septic, you have to have it inspected. If it passes, they will move the permit through.
Right, obviously, yeah, and that I understand, but then, but if it doesn't pass, then all of a sudden, I'm, instead of looking at $7,200 to get the deck redone, I'm looking at something significantly larger.
That question, we don't have any jurisdiction over that. We just got that comment from the Health Department. You really have to go and discuss that with them.
Yeah, so basically, so what you're telling me, unless I have a septic inspection and it passed, there's no way I can move forward with the deck.
I, I don't know. That, their letter says they're not going to sign off on the building permit until you pass a Title V, but what I urge you to do is go over and talk to the health inspector and see what they want to do.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder whether this even satisfies the requirement of a certified plot plan because it doesn't, it doesn't show the septic system.
True, but he's got to go, we don't really care about that. That's up to the Health Department and he's going to have to go to the Health Department. So, it shows where the dwelling is and where the deck is and the dimensions and it's signed by the engineer. You can see the stamp, so I'm satisfied with this. If the other applicant had had this much, it would have been okay, but they did not have something showing where the house is, where the lot line is.
Mr. Peach, I have no problem with the replacement of the railing. I think this other question is major, but again, not our jurisdiction.
Mr. Hedderstedt.
Irrespec, irregardless of what you have to do to go through the rest of the town organization to get a building permit, as far as I'm concerned, you satisfy the requirements for a special permit under the rules and regulations set forth and for the state and in accordance with the Gale case, as far as I'm concerned. The rest of the board will have to either confirm or deny that, but as far as I'm concerned, you meet the Gale case requirements and all, and all of the associated therefor's and wherefor's. So, special permit, as far as I'm concerned, for what you want to do is fine. All you have to do is go through all the rest of the bells and whistles that the town has established.
Yeah, I, I'm not going to vote on the case, but I do agree with Mr. Hedderstedt. You met the legal requirements for this board to issue a special permit. How many contractors do you anticipate building out this structure when you're ready to go?
How many contractors?
Yeah.
Just one.
Just one, okay.
Yeah.
Because it's an issue of parking. I mean, Vacation, it's a little tight down there and the lake is down here, right?
Pardon me?
Aren't you on the lake? Isn't a lake just down the street?
I'm across from the lake. I'm on the other side of, I'm at the corner of Lakeside and Vacation, so the, both John Joseph and Buckspond are on the other side of the street, so I'm not right, and the...
On the other side of Vacation. On the other side of Vacation.
Right, I'm on the other, so on the far side of Vacation and I'm between Queen on Road and Vacation.
Right, but just, my only concern is, it is a little tight there during the summertime, so if you only got one contractor, that's not going to be an issue, because this is not a big project, that. Mr. Donahue.
I agree with the other folks in the board. You've got swept up into, all of these applications go through various boards and sign off on it.
Right.
Apparently, based upon this report from the Health Department, they have no information in regard to the septic system. So, it's incumbent upon you to provide the information. Now, you may, you just had it pumped.
Right.
They just had, the company that pumped it knows whether that's a septic system or that's a cesspool.
Right.
Once you get that straightened away, and if it is a authorized septic system and the Title V requirement is met, you're good to go.
Okay. So, now it's basically after, see if I can get somebody else to take a look at that and make sure it meets Title V.
The Health Department will take, they'll send somebody else.
Yeah, that's what the Health, Health Department requires, right.
How long ago was the house built, do you know?
It was built in the, between 55 and 60. Your records say 1960, as far as I know, it was somewhere between 55 and 60.
It should have been a septic system put in by then or some or after.
Might not be Title V if it's that old.
Right.
Well, it depends on whether or not, and you people keep saying Title V, but you got to be careful because she said Title V or. I think there's a, there is a, there is something other than just Title V. It's, what else did she say?
She just says Title V inspection.
Inspection.
Right.
Title V inspection.
Right.
That doesn't mean that it has to be a Title V whole system. If it meets the, the critical requirements of what they got, then I think you're all right, but who knows? It's not for us.
Perhaps, yeah, I don't know. Mr. Armstrong.
I think it clearly meets the standard, so I wish you good luck with the project.
Mr. Capoli.
I agree with the rest of the board. Just have one question for the board. So, if we were to grant him the permit tonight, does he get two years to act on that?
Shall we say that again?
He has two years to act on it.
I think so, yeah.
So, we could grant it even though he knows that he can't act upon it until he...
Oh, absolutely. We do that, yeah, we do that regularly, yeah.
He can't get a building permit.
Yeah, because he's got, failed safe is always, he's got to still get a building permit and that's where all the town agencies that have jurisdiction have to sign off on it. Okay, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this application?
The only thing like I can add is a gentleman by the name Leo Cocun stopped by the house this afternoon and he was telling me that he had meant to write a letter in support of the application, yet with the tornadoes, he had not gotten around to it, so he thought I should mention that here at the meeting. I don't know whether that helps or not.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak to this application? No, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, public hearings close. I'll entertain a motion in the case, please.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, the board hereby grants under Case 2019-29, a special permit to William H.
Peach.
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 And Mary Ann Peach.
Yeah.
Is that correct? To change out a docking and railing on an existing deck of a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application was made pursuant to Code of Town of Harwich, 325, Table 2. Area regulations set forth in MGL 48, Section 6. The property is located 11 Lakeside Terrace, MAP 72, Parcel 283, in the RR zoning district. The approval of the special permit is based upon the applicant's submitted documents and for planned alterations or reconstruction of this non-conforming, on this non-conforming, single-family residential structure and that it is in accordance with the Gale case and that there is no new nonconformity and there will be no resulting substantial detriment to the neighborhood. There is no option required for parking or for, because it's such a small project.
Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, second, Ms. Muller, or actually, Mr. Capoli had his hand up. Discussion by the board, Ms. Muller.
No, I'm in support of this application.
Mr. Hedderstedt.
I approve it.
Okay, yes, it meets the requirements as stated by Mr. Hedderstedt, in my opinion. Mr. Donahue?
In my opinion, I'm going to approve it.
Mr. Armstrong? Mr. Capoli? Okay.
Gee, we were able to do that without a letter from Leo Cocunis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, special permit is granted, Mr. Peach.
Okay, thank you.
But you still need to go to the Board of Health and deal with them, as we stated. But I thought Mr. Donahue's suggestion is a good one, enlist the support of your septic pumper.
Do we want to move to the first case?
I'd like to make a suggestion that since the homeowner on Case 30 was here on time and that looks like a less complex case than the case that is also awaiting us, that we take Case 30 first.
I, I agree. I think the, I think your case is going to take a little more time. We'd like to do 2019-30 if that's...
Absolutely.
Okay, Mr. Donahue, if you could call 2019-30 for us, please.
Case number 2019-30, Lucille J. Van Baron. Through her agent, R. Scott Reese, has applied for special permit to create a small addition unto a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to Code of Town of Harwich...
The application is pursuant to Code of Town of Howard, Section three twenty-seven, Table Two, Area Regulation Set Forth, excuse me, in MGL Chapter forty-eight, Section Six. The property is located at nineteen Alden Street, map twenty-eight, parcel A one dash thirty-three, in the R.M. zoning district. I have a letter with regard to this from the senior health agent, Katie Teneglia. I have reviewed the application for the special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals for the project located nineteen Alden Street. The septic system was installed in nineteen ninety-two. The property is located in Zone Two, therefore it is limited to four bedrooms maximum. As the plan is proposed, the Health Department has no issues or concerns. If you have any further questions, the Health Department, though, they have no problems with it.
Okay, voting on this case will be Ms. Muller, Mr. Hedersted, Mr. Donahue, Mr. Armstrong, Mr. Capoli. I will not vote. If you could introduce yourselves, please, and then present your petition.
I'm Lucille Van Baron, the homeowner at nineteen Alden Street.
And I'm Scott Ricky, I'm gonna be your contractor.
Good.
That's what came in.
Okay, proceed, please.
Well, actually, he has all the plans and everything, so I'll defer.
As you can see on the, the plan from Moran Engineering, there's a little jog in the back of the house, where there's, where there's nothing, there's an outdoor shower. I mean, you see this shaded area right here on your plan?
Yes.
And basically, we're just trying to connect that, that area of the house, as it has structural damage, sill damage, and with looking at it, to fill that in, would bring the dining room, the den, the kitchen, everything, so make a much nicer flow in the home. It starts at eighteen four, and as we go to the north, by the time you get done with the small, it's only like eight or nine feet, you're beyond the twenty-foot setback limit. So, it starts at eighteen four, and it slowly gets bigger. And that's, it's basically, it's that simple, it's just connecting the dots, making the house more cohesive for use, gives it a better flow. She's recently retired, liked to use the house more, and it would be just much nicer to come down and enjoy it, you know, as a newer project, and it does need some repair there, so just makes sense to eliminate the rot and fill it in.
Yeah, there's a lot of rotting wood there.
Yeah.
And I've heard verbally from both my neighbors and across the street and on either side, they had no objection, verbal, no objection.
So, on the exterior, all you're doing is really putting a wall-
Yes.
-on the end of the shaded, and then all the real work is interior.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, anything further?
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to ask, answer them.
Okay, Ms. Muller.
I have a much larger set of plans, if you'd like to look at them.
Yep, we've got them, thank you.
There's some smaller plans that came with your package.
I visited the property today. I think this satisfies the Gale case. I have no further questions.
Mr. Hedersted.
I have no further questions. I agree, it meets the Gale, Gale case for the approval by of a special permit.
Yes, I, I agree with that also. Really, I mean, it doesn't change much of anything. I mean, just, that's why I wanted to get on the record, all you're doing is basically extending the existing line to cover that little gap area, if you will.
That's right.
As far as the lot line goes. Mr. Donahue.
I walk the property. It's a lovely lot.
Thank you. A little overgrown, but look at there.
Still nice. I'm, I'm agreement with the board.
Mr. Armstrong.
I agree, it is a lovely lot. Congratulations on your retirement.
Well, thank you very much.
And I think it meets everything.
Mr. Capoli.
I agree with the board.
Anyone in the public want to comment? Mr. Murphy says no. I'll entertain a motion to close the public-
Mr. Evans, Mr. Evans.
I'm sorry, Mr. Evans. I'll entertain a, a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, the hearing closed. I'll entertain a motion in the case.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Case two zero one nine dash thirty. The board hereby provides a approval for a special permit to Lucille J. Van Bjorn to create a small addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. The application has been made pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, Table Three, I'm sorry, Section, Table three twenty-five, Table Two, Lot Area Regulation Set Forth in MGL Chapter forty-eight, Section Six. Property located at nineteen Alden Street, map twenty-six, parcel A one dash thirty-three in the R.M. zoning district. The special permit is based upon the applicant's submitted documents for this planned alteration or reconstruction, and it's to a non-conforming single-family residential structure. That is in accordance with the Gale case, and there is no new nonconformity, and there will be no new resulting substantial detriment to the neighborhood. The only question I have is, or the statement I need to make, is this gonna be required? Is this a small, is this a small job and doesn't have a, a problem with the street?
Dirt road, narrow, iffy.
Well, but they do have parking on the property.
Yes.
And how many contractors do you expect on the job?
It'll be, it'll be my crew, which is crew of three, and also there is on the lot where the shed is, and come in, there's a place we can park over there, so we can leave, we can leave the road clear. There's access on the, the southern end of the lot, where it kind of fans down, we can come in there-
It's a little overgrown right now.
And park, well, and park there, so we don't interfere with anyone.
Can you assure us that there won't be any interference with the summer traffic?
I will make sure, well, we won't be getting this till after Labor Day with the weight and everything, but we will make sure that no one is, no flow will be interrupted. My mother lives on a dirt road, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Yep, I've lived with that with fifty years.
So, the only consideration we should add at this point, it'd be that the contractors will park off-street during the construction.
Could I have a second for Mr. Hedersted's motion, please? Second, who? Second, Mr. Armstrong? Okay. Discussion by the board, Ms. Muller.
No more questions, no discussion.
Mr. Hedersted.
I've said it all.
Okay, in my opinion, it meets the, the bylaw and the Gale case. It certainly will not pose any substantial detriment to the neighborhood. Mr. Donahue.
I vote in favor for it.
Mr. Armstrong?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Capoli.
My only question is, do you have any relation to Martin?
Martin Van Baron? It's not Van Bjorn, it's Van Baron.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, special permit granted.
Thank you very much for it.
Thank you.
Would you like this extra setting?
You'll need plans, do you need to grab any plans?
Thank you, Sharon.
There's those two right there.
No, we have the case, first case.
Which one are we got?
Deerfield Road. These documents that you were party to the original-
Robert and Mark.
We-
Obviously.
It's, it's odd shaped lot.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Oh, my God, yes.
I will send them in.
This is ridiculous.
I'll be there that day.
Look. And what is about particularly, and the property's decision that you're giving?
You want this as well?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Should we keep this, or should we give them to you?
I got it.
Good luck.
I'll just jump in.
Thank you so much. Two cases.
Oh, the two cases, hold on to them.
Oh, hold on.
Hold on to them. Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, you have my phone.
Yes.
Somewhere I read here your name and days.
Okay, we need to get the applicants back in.
That's an evil laugh. Somewhere I read that. He gave the party to this.
This is a business, right?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Donahue, if you could call the case for us.
All right. Case two thousand nineteen twenty-six, William Marsh trustee, excuse me, wrong one. Let's see, twenty-six, twenty-one, twenty-two. Two thousand nineteen twenty-eight, Weechmere Harbor Real Estate LLC.
You're right, it was William Marsh.
Oh, William Marsh.
Oh, William Marsh, I'm sorry. We skipped ahead here. Go ahead.
Yeah, we moved the deck chairs. William Marsh trustee of the Deerfield Nominee Trust through his agent, Susan Ledoux of Eastwood Companies, is appealing the Building Commissioner's denial decision regarding a rear setback or in the alternative, a variance to the building, an industrial metal building. The application is pursuant to the Code of Town of Howard, three twenty-five, Table Two, Area Regulation Set Forth in MGL Chapter forty-eight, Section ten. The property is located at four Deerfield Road, map twenty-five, parcel T one dash seven in the two zoning district.
IL.
Excuse me, IL.
IL, yeah.
That was wrong, no more. IL.
IL, okay. And we have two pieces of correspondence.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean-
You need copy.
No, I've got it.
All right, we have two pieces of correspondence, one is from Katie Teneglia, senior health agent. I have reviewed the application for a setback or in the alternative, a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals to the project located for Deerfield Road. As the plan is proposed, the Health Department has no issues or concerns. The approval of the disposal system construction permit will be required prior to the building permit application approval. No variance from Title V or local regulations will be granted. If floor drains are used, they must discharge, must not discharge the ground, a leaching structure or a septic system in accordance with the Board of Health floor drain regulation. Any further questions? The senior health agent. Second one we have is from the Howard's Planning Board. This property, excuse me, is currently before the planning board for site plan review approval. During the board's initial hearing, it was realized that the proposed building was within the rear yard setback, twenty-five feet, where fifty feet is required. Planning board supports the request for a variance in light of the unique shape of the lot in relation to the Deerfield Road and Depot Street. The board does not support the Building Commissioner's decision. That is a rear yard setback, and therefore does not support the appeal.
We're not sure what that means, but that's what the planning board has written, so-
I think, I think there's an inadvertent not.
Yeah, it is what it is, so.
I got it right in the bottom.
Okay. Voting on this case will have Ms. Muller, Mr. Hedersted, I'm gonna vote on this one, Mr. Donahue, and Mr. Capoli. Mr. Armstrong will participate, but not be voting on the case. All right, sir, if you could introduce yourself and who's at table with you.
My name is Bill Marsh. I'm the owner of Eastwood Companies, and this, with me is my attorney, Bill Riley. The property in question is maybe most familiar to you by describing it. This is Great Western Road here, and this is Depot Road here. This is the Stonewood Complex here. This is Cludier here. This is Allen's Landscaping, and the subject before you tonight is this oddly configured corner lot that we would like to build a warehouse building on.
My name is Bill Riley. I'm a lawyer in Chatham. I represent Bill as, as a trustee of the Deerfield Trust and also at Eastwood Companies. The, so, we disagree with the, the building inspector's determination. I'd like to direct your attention to the subdivision plan as approved. You'll note, which is a little unusual, that the setback lines are drawn on each lot. And I have, I'd like to pass out, if that's okay, the minutes of that meeting where it was approved. That's the second, number eighteen Manning Associates definitive hearing. And, there you go. On the third line, at the end, it says, "Building setback lines are shown on the plan."
Thank you.
Do you have an extra one to turn around?
Sure. Sure. You have it for you. And so, the, you, you would have anticipated that the planning board would be familiar with the setback requirements of the bylaw, since that was still one of their principal functions. This section of the bylaw had not changed from that date to this day. So, they approved the plan showing no rear setback. So, I think the, the, again, with all due respect to Mr. Chesley, whom we like and respect a great deal, we think that perhaps he felt he wasn't able to say there was no rear setback. But if you look at the way the property's been developed in, in the shape of the lot, I think that it's, it's sort of easy to say this, there's really no rear setback. The sidelines plan, the approved subdivision plan, shows a twenty-five-foot setback to Depot, which is a sideline setback, or, or front setback. You know, I suppose the purpose of the fifty-foot setback was to provide protection from somebody who was located behind the lot. Here, A, it's, they're all industrial lots, and the fifty-foot setback really sure is a function in this setting, because of the shape of the lot. If you, and I, I think the fact that the current planning board sent a letter supporting our appeal, sort of, it meant to, I think, is indicative of the fact that both the planning board that approved this plan and the current planning board feel that this lot, as odd as it is, really does not have a rear line on it. So, so, so question number one is, we'd ask that you overrule the Building Commissioner's determination that were required to be setback, that, that the Deerfield line is the rear, and it has to be setback fifty feet from that. So, we'd like you to, to say, overrule, overturn his ruling, the rule that the plan as shown is in compliance with the setback requirements. That would be question number one. Be happy to run through the various criteria for you as well.
Just before you do that, could you, I saw you had this up there, and just-
The site plan?
Yeah, at least from my notification, show me where the front and the rear of the building are, because I can't tell. I have to say, where do you consider the front to be?
We consider the front to- We consider the front, which is the access to be off of Deerfield. Here's Deerfield Road. And the overhead doors as shown on the building plan are here, here, and here.
Okay.
We consider that the front.
Under the, under the planning board approval, we can't have access from Depot.
There is, in the subdivision here, the, um, division of that property back in 1989 had a restriction and it did not, had a condition of the approval of the plan that did not allow access all along Depot Road and/or Great Western, because they were worried about traffic issues along the frontage. And then this road, Deerfield Road, was approved and it was conditioned that all the access of these lots and these lots be off of Deerfield and not off of Depot and/or West, Great Western. Did that answer your question, David?
It does, thank you very much, yes. Okay, with that, yes, Attorney Riley, why don't you make your case for a variance also, please?
So, the, as you know, to qualify for a variance, there has to be hardship, financial or otherwise, arising out of the soil shape or topography of the lot or structure. Relief must be able to be granted without substantial derogation from the, from the purpose and intent of the bylaw and that there be no detriment to the public good. Those are, those are, that's the criteria, as you know. And so, uh, we would offer up that not only do we think the lot's shape is unique, but the planning board also agreed with that assessment. So I think you could find that enforcing the 50-foot setback would constitute a financial hardship in that the, the size of the building in that area would be greatly reduced. And in fact, you know, from our perspective, the imposition, you know, the application of the 50-foot setback would render the lot less than half its value because of the, the size of the structures that are permitted on the other, other portions of the subdivision. So we think that there is substantial financial hardship that rises out of the shape of the building if the bylaws applied, as Mr. Chesley has contested. We don't believe that there's any derogation from the purpose and intent of the bylaw, as evidenced by the opinion of the planning board. The fact that the subdivision as approved showed the setbacks as we proposed them, that it's an industrial zone and, you know, the, I mean, candidly, there's, there's no, there's no one to receive protection. And that's what setbacks are for, for protection of abutting property. There's no one here to receive protection of that property, of that setback. And as Mr. Marsh pointed out, you know, the condition of the, the approval of the subdivision was that there could be no access from Depot Road or Great Western Road. It all had to be from Deerfield. So I think that the, um... What, what do you mean?
The site plan, you have a copy?
Yeah.
Let me just look at that. Thank you.
We also believe there's no substantial detriment to the, to the public good if the variance were to be granted.
I would also like to point out that the building as proposed, if you go to the zoning compliance table on the Clark Engineering Site Plan, the, um, building coverage on this site is 40% of max is allowed, and yet we're at 29.1%. The site coverage, which I think is as important a consideration as anything, we're allowed, in this zone, we're allowed 70% site coverage and we have 62.8% of coverage. Hold, the whole, and then the result of that is we have, that would, if you have a site coverage of 70% allowed, that would mean that 30% would be green space. And we have, if you just simply do the math, we have probably 38 or 62 minus. We have about 37% of green space contributed on here. And again, the, the building coverage is only 29%. And the site coverage is 62%, where 70% is allowed.
And, and just to follow up with that. So, so the building commissioner, uh, has, has ruled that we need a 50-foot setback in this area. Now, that's a 25-foot setback. So you, so you say, what's the benefit? I mean, there's supposed to be a benefit from the bylaw. What's the benefit to this property owner if this building is setback 50 feet from the property line? I mean, it's, you know, all it is is an asphalt parking lot, basically. And so, uh, that, that's why we believe that the variance can be granted without detriment, substantial derogation of the purpose and intent of the bylaw or any substantial detriment to the public good. Because it's hard to see there's any benefit to the town or to the abutting property owner if the 50-foot setback is enforced.
Would this be considered a corner lot under 325-18C? Because if it's a corner lot, you only have to be setback a distance equal to the front yard setback, which is 25 feet.
Well...
I don't, I don't know if you make the definition of corner lot or not. You've got to tell us.
Well, nobody raised that issue with us. We're not as smart as you are. The, uh, I think that, um, we think it's a corner lot. You know, why the, why the building commissioner didn't think it was a corner lot, I, I don't know. I mean, that, I think that really goes to, um, that deals more directly with his decision. You know, in other words, you're overruling his decision rather than granting the variance.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, if we can go that route. I mean, look at 325-2, the definition of corner lot. It can be, a lot at the intersection of two or more intersecting road streets or ways or abutting a curve in a road street or way, provided that the angle of the intersection is less than 135 degrees or, in the case of a lot of abutting a curve in the road, street, or way, the radius of said curve is less than 150 feet. I can't read, I don't know if you make that from the plan. I'm not an engineer, so I, I don't know if you make that angle or the radius with this lot. That's why I said, you've got to tell us.
Can you read those numbers again, Chairman?
It's a lot corner. The definition under 325-2 is a lot at the intersection of two or more intersecting road streets or ways, which I guess it might meet that, or abutting a curve in the road, street, or way, certainly meets that, provided that the angle of the intersection is less than 135 degrees. That's at the intersection. Or if it's a, or in the case of a lot of abutting a curve in the road, street, or way, the radius of the curve is less than 150 feet. But looking at the plan, I, I can't tell if you meet that radius requirement. Seems to me that's the one you would look at.
Well, the, the, a couple of things. The, um, each, where, where our subdivision roads, each Depot, were required to provide rounded. So, but if you look at the sidelines of Deerfield, if, if they were projected to Depot, it would be a 90-degree angle. So I would suggest that it is less than 130 degrees.
Well, on the other hand, now I look at the original plan, I do see you've got a radius of 180, so you don't meet that requirement. It looks like, and the other radius?
Radius is 25.
Yeah, but then keep going to the right. It says R of the curve there, 180. R equals 180?
Yep, that's...
You might meet the angle of the intersection, yes. That's less than 135. So I, I throw that out to the board for consideration.
I would suggest that the requirement of the radius less than 130 is where the road joins, the two roads intersect, not, not the subdivision road as it continues on into, into the subdivision.
So the radius where they intersect is the one that is shown on the original plan at 25?
Yes.
And I assume that's the same that's on the plan with the building?
That's correct.
That, those angles haven't changed at all?
That's correct.
That's correct, okay. Okay, anything further, Mr. Riley or Mr. Marsh?
Well, I would say that the, the, uh, I think it's a, kind of an easier lift if, if, if you determine that the building commissioner's opinion is incorrect rather than granting a variance. But I think we qualify for relief under either concept. It's a, you know, again, based on the correspondence from the, from the planning board, they clearly think it's a beneficial project for the town. We would request your determination either that the building commissioner's opinion is incorrect or that we qualify for a variance.
Okay, Ms. Muller.
I'm going to hold my questions till I hear the public question. From the public and from those of you who were present in the original discussion of this lot, which I think was you two gentlemen. I can't find a note, but somewhere, oh, no, that was the other case, okay.
Mr. Hederstad.
It's, it's always been my point that the planning board, thus the town, would never allow a piece of property to be designated as buildable when, as a matter of fact, they put conditions on it that are, make it almost impossible. And in this case, because of the uniqueness of the way that Deerfield Road was constructed, because of the planning board's requirement that nothing, no entrances be put, exits or entrances be put on Depot Road, that essentially wiped out having a, as far as I'm concerned, a 50-foot setback for rear. It moves the whole building and the whole lot completely back asswards, which in my ca, and excuse my language, but in my case, I think that's wrong. And I don't think they went, they intended to do that. So, I have a, I have, first of all, I don't believe we should pass anything that says we, and I'll probably get criticized greatly for this, but I don't think we should pass anything tonight on this that says we re-criticize or we say that the building commissioner was wrong. I don't think we need to do that. I think we just need to go and, as far as I'm concerned, grant, and if you want to do a special permit, then do a special permit. And it's then, that alleviates the building commissioner from being involved in a fight as to whether, you know, 50 is correct and it applies to this lot or anything else. Because, as I said again, I don't think, when the, when the planning board had these lots, this was so unique. And to keep it with a 50-foot setback is just ridiculous. And they, they didn't, nobody really thought about it, but when you start to utilize that piece of property for anything, it's not going to work with a 50-foot setback. So I don't believe the requirement is really there for a 50 foot, for 50-foot setback. Rear, because the rear is not the rear, it's the front now. And you can't, you can't move that lot completely around. You're never going to be able to fit a building like this or anything close to it with the kind of setback that somebody thinks we need. So I'm all for, I don't think you need a, I don't think you need a variance.
No, they, they have to have a variance.
You have to have a variance.
They have to have a variance. There's no basis in the code for a special permit for this kind of building. It's got to be a variance.
No, but a variance for the 50-foot setback is not applicable.
It's got to be a variance.
Not on 50 feet, because I don't believe it's, it's there. That's my point. I don't believe the 50-foot is a requirement that the building planning board put in. And then when they saw, when they changed the, the ground rules and you can't use Deerfield Road, you can't use Depot Road as an entrance, you were put in a position of a no-win. And then you couldn't use the lot as it is.
Could I make an alternate suggestion then?
Sure.
The alternate suggestion would be not to overrule the building commissioner. I understand that position.
Right.
The, uh, but you could make a determination as the zoning board, that this is a corner lot, something that the building commissioner clearly didn't consider. That it's a corner lot and therefore there's no 50-foot requirement under the section the chairman quoted. And that way, candidly, I wish I'd thought of it. The, the, you know, a good project gets to move forward. The property retains its value. The building commissioner is not wrong. He just didn't think about the corner lot. And, and I think that you're not granting a variance. You're making a determination, which is binding on the, on the building commissioner that it's a corner lot and therefore there is no 50-foot setback requirement.
Which is where I was coming from when I proposed that.
Well, that's what I was trying to get at, but you can say it which way you want. Trust mine.
I, I don't feel strongly one way or the other because I think this is a unique case where in fact they do meet the requirements for a variance. And they would have to have a variance to do this building as it's proposed, unless we hold it's a corner lot. In which case then it's only a 25-foot setback from the roads and according to their plot plan, they're no closer than 25.2 feet from the roads. So, and it's also a unique piece of property. I don't really think they can do a whole lot with it other than what they've done. And I agree, they would have a significant hardship if they had to do a 50-foot setback. I mean, there would be not enough room to do anything, I think, commercially viable on the lot.
You're taking the words, yep, I agree.
And it's not going to have any substantial detriment or derogation of the bylaw.
And the planning board has indicated support for a variance.
I guess my inclination would probably be, but I didn't want to kick around the corner lot for the board to consider, but I certainly think that this lot is one of the unique cases where they really squarely meet the requirements for a variance.
I, because, but remember what you've done. You're saying here that the planning board developed and approved a lot that essentially would require a variance.
I don't know that in 1989. I haven't gone back to see if there were changes. I don't know.
Well, they changed it when they...
The planning board, if you look at some of the things the planning board does, they grant waivers. And maybe they considered this to be the grant of a waiver.
Well, when they changed the requirement, you cannot exit or entrance on Depot Road. You had to have this special Deerfield Road made up. That changed the whole, that changed the whole concept of the 50-foot setback. And that's what I was trying to get at, that in, 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 instead of making it a variance, I would say the corner lot and approve it. But, you know, that's just my point, it doesn't make any difference, one, one way or the other.
Exactly. Again, my concern, the planning board, whatever they did, they did, but the current IL requirements on the rear setback are 50 feet. No matter what the, I don't care what the planning board did, the current requirements are 50 foot. So it's either we hold it a corner lot, and I don't, I'm fine with that, or we grant a variance. Mr. Donahue?
I would support the part of the line.
What comes back to me quite often is that what is triggering, triggering the request for variance is the size of the building, right? Have you, how, have you looked at smaller buildings on that lot and location on that?
Uh, yeah, well, we have, I think if you, if you were, I wish I had a highlighter or something, but if we were to maintain a 50-foot setback, either from Depot Road-
Oh, it's probably, yeah.
From Deerfield or from the, from the, uh, butters.
Sir, there's a highlighter.
Oh, there you go.
I mean, you're really left with next to nothing in the way of a building.
Yeah.
Which is, just curiosity wise, what would the square footage be then? Or approximate, you know, just an idea.
Well, the, in defense of the-
If you double that, it'd be a small building.
In defense of the corner lot concept on the planning board. If you look at the subdivision plan, which we put in, where the, where the setback lines are drawn on, they're drawn on at 25 feet to Depot, to Lot 8, and to Deerfield. If you see them there. So, uh, I think that's, that might be a pretty clear indication that the planning board at that time was treating it as a corner lot.
Okay, Mr. Capoli?
I appreciate the ingenuity on, on the corner lot idea, and I, I'm not saying I wouldn't support it, but I believe the applicant would have to come forward and present proof positive, clear and convincing proof that it does meet each one of the items in that particular code. So I'm not willing to entertain that. Also not willing to entertain a, an argument which asks us to overturn or overrule the building commissioner unless the applicant is prepared to present clear and convincing evidence that, that he acted in arbitrary or capricious manner, or some other real reason that we should overturn his decision. And finally, I am willing to vote for a variance. I think it's the only option presented this evening which, which makes sense and which is within our power this evening.
Yes, Mr. Marsh?
I think if I could answer the previous question, the, the building proposed is a 5,800 square foot building on roughly a 20,000 square foot lot. And again, we're under on coverage, and we're over on green space, and, um, we're under on, on site coverage. But if we were to, and, and, I'm not sure where to go, if we were to maintain a 50-foot setback from Depot Road, that 50-foot line is, is shown in yellow here, so you can see how much less. Then if it's 50 in the frontage, it gets the way back to here. And if it's 50 from this, this sideline, that, that moves that, what we are respecting as 25 feet into 50. And it'd be very, the next to nothing you can build here on that lot.
Okay, if there's nothing further, I'm gonna entertain any comments from the public. Mr. Evans? Uh, if you could go to the podium and introduce yourself, please.
My name is Tom Evans. I live at 90 Great Western Road, have lived there since 1973, when the subject property was a wooded knoll. So I, I've been familiar with it going back to, going back a ways, when it was owned by the, by the Hall, um, Hall family. Then I think there were a couple of owners before Eastward Companies. I'd like to think out loud with you on wearing two hats, on, on two perspectives on this. So first, let me just speak generally, and, and now I'm wearing Tom Evans resident hat and Tom Evans president of the Harwich Conservation Trust hat. If you look at this zoning in general, I think this was zoned probably in 19, in the 1950s, perhaps 1960s, when zoning was introduced in the town of Harwich. And at a time when there was far less awareness about water quality and the protection of waterways within the town of Harwich. And especially in the last probably 10 or 15 years, the town of Harwich, the Harwich Conservation Commission, and the Harwich Conservation Trust have partnered on a wide variety of projects, trying to protect the waterways all the way from the headwaters of Herring River up at Hinkley's Pond, down to the Marsh area. My guess is that if we were talking about zoning today, rather than in the 50s or 60s, it would be a long shot to be zoning this area right next to Herring River as light industrial. And I think in some ways, that came to light a number of years ago when Christie Mijos was, was talking about the possibility of putting a gas station at that intersection. And people sat up and realized that we really needed to be more thoughtful about the development that happens at that corner. And so I, my, my urging of, of the board is to bear that in mind and be appropriately protective of the investments that have been made in protecting that waterway. Personally, I have no problems with less dense light industrial development than more dense industrial development. The lots are as they have been approved. But if it requires a smaller building to fit the size of that lot, I don't have any objection to it. I also don't have any objection to the building as proposed, as long as it meets the requirements of the Board of Health. And it looks to me as though they have been careful about looking at, at trapped drainage. And when you look at the kinds of things that can operate in those buildings, you, you really need to have that kind of attention to drainage, and the Board of Health has been doing its job in that respect. My second reservation about this has to do with the reality that that lot, well before Eastward acquired it, has been a source of embarrassment for the neighborhood, because it's been kind of a bombed-out sandpit over the years. And to their credit, Cludier has done a great job, since they have acquired their property from Mr. Marsh and have built there. And the subsequent landscaping operation building has also been very well done, and I give them credit for that. But the reality is that over the years, that's, that lot has been, I think, an embarrassment to the town and an embarrassment to the neighborhood. It's the welcome-to-Harwich statement in North Harwich for anyone coming into the town from Dennis on Great Western Road. Coming from the rep, from the west, there really are only two entry points into Harwich, Great Western Road and Route 28. And over the years, there have been junk boats, junk cars. Today, there is a futon and an unregistered car. There are a variety of boats that don't look like they're gonna sail again or be in the water again, a couple of them on decrepit trailers. Now they've been moved farther away from Great Western Road, and some of them kind of hidden between trees, but the fact of the matter is that they're still there. I would like to be of help here and say that Mr. Marsh and I have engaged in some respectful and appreciated email exchanges over this over the course of, over the course of several years. And he's explained that the problem is Carl's boatyard. And that in fact, Carl's overflow is what creates some of the unsightly mess on that lot. And to the extent that the zoning board of appeals can attach conditions to approvals, and I don't know to what extent you can do that. But I would love to give the Eastward Companies and Mr. Marsh the ammunition to say to Carl, "Carl, it's time to clean up your act." Because it, it has been an embarrassment. In one of our exchanges, Mr. Marsh said to me, he's been a friend for a very long time, I don't want to tell him what to do, but he did share with me an email that he sent to Carl saying, "Look, at some point, I may want to develop that property, and I don't want the neighbors standing up in opposition to it because of the mess that you've created." And here I am standing up, not in opposition to it, I want it to be within the, the appropriate rules and regulations. But I would also like to give Mr. Marsh the ammunition that he needs to go to Carl and say, "It's not me your friend any longer, Carl, you know, you just need to do this." And Bill, you and I haven't met and talked about this in person, but I hope I'm not misrepresenting our exchanges, and I want to stress the fact that I'm trying to figure out a way to help make this happen in a way that works. Both from the conservation point of view and preserving the town's initiatives and resources, and for the neighborhood. I mean, the fact of the matter is, we're being asked to, to give a consideration here, and I would like the, the applicant to give a consideration back to the neighborhood. Eastward does great work in, in Harwich, in Chatham, you've just finished a great project at Saga Tucket. I'd like to see a great project in Harwich. And I'm happy to respond to any questions that you might have.
No, I just, well, anybody have any questions for Tom?
I do have a question. Carl from Carl's Boat Yard, which lots here does he own?
It's across the street, it's on the north side of Great Western Road.
But he's parking on this, he's putting his overflow on this side of the road?
There's several boats there now, right at the edge of the road, there, there are boats around the property.
What land are they on?
They're, they're on Eastward.
I'm Mylean. You know, the, I make the comment that, um, the, this representation is completely accurate. And, uh, you know, we've gotten different letters from different officials in the town, have landed on Carl several times, and told him, "Look, you gotta knock it off, or we're gonna come in and just take this stuff out of here." And he is an old friend, an old sailing buddy, and there have been times, I think you'll agree, that Carl's gone over there and cleaned the site entirely.
It's better now that it's been in some time.
And then all of a sudden, you come back a year later, and he's filled it up again, right? And then we get after him again, and he takes everything out of there. I went by there today, and I said, "Carl, what are you doing?" And it's just, he's, he's an incredible headache. If, if we could develop the rest of Deerfield Road with buildings, with landscaping, with parking, with businesses, Carl will have to disappear, because there won't be any place for him to go.
But until, but until then, yes, probably accurate. But until then, can we help you by saying, "Carl, it's not me, it's not your buddy"?
I'd continue to land on Carl, you know, with, with something stronger. It's really, it, it's too bad he's, he's overusing his welcome.
Mr. Capoli?
Mr. Evans?
Where about Tom?
You, you said that, um, you, you asked the board to, to put some condition on it, did you have a recommendation, or?
You know, I, I don't know what, I don't know what the rights of the board are under these circumstances, and whether or not you have to make a ruling that is specific to this property. But if you could say that if you choose to grant a variance, that one of the conditions of the variance is that Eastward Companies speak with, you know, abutters, and perhaps Carl specifically, and say, "You no longer have the options to overflow your business onto Eastward Companies' property." And if that would be possible, frankly, it would clean it up.
But it sounds as if Eastward Companies has done that, and what's lacking is an enforcement mechanism.
That's correct, right, and the, and the Eastward would be happy to accept a condition that no building permit could be issued until, you know, the boats and cars and other stuff are removed from the property.
And we, of course, don't issue building permits.
Well, they have to, because the building inspector would have to respect the condition if it was a condition of the approval of this project.
My concern would be two or three years down the road when, when Carl's back at doing Carl's thing. I, I don't know, I'm trying to be helpful here and, and find a solution for the, not only for the neighborhood, but for the town. Because it's not an attractive way to enter the town. You know, we wouldn't do it in East, we wouldn't do it in East Harwich, we wouldn't do it in Harwich port. You know, let's treat North Harwich the same way we would treat the rest of the community.
Attorney Riley was gonna say something.
Well, I mean, the, you know, as, as, you know, Ms. Muller just said, you know, the issue of the building permit, and then the next day Carl starts moving the boats back. I mean, it, it might be a slippery slope you don't wanna go on, to tell you the truth. I mean, you know, it's, uh, I mean, see, the difficulty is that when Bill talks to Carl, Carl reacts, and then the stuff comes trickling back. The only way to get some sort of permanent thing is to take some sort of legal action against Carl, which Bill is very reluctant to do. You know, not that it doesn't cost money, but, you know, Carl's an old friend, and, you know, he's just, he's like the, like the uncle that won't go home. You know, he's just, you don't wanna kick him out of the street, but you wish he'd stop overstaying his welcome. So, uh, we would accept whatever, whatever the board wanted to do.
Anybody else in the audience wanna comment? No? Ms. Muller, you had reserved your questions.
I, I, I think I'd answer them, except for one rhetorical question, which is, how much does Eastward Companies want this? Do they want it enough to take definitive action against Carl?
Of, of course, because-
Which trumps, business or friendship in this situation?
Well, it's, it, he's gonna have to, because, um, let me just, or, let me go to this. These three lots are vacant. These two are Cludier, so it's fully developed, there's no place for Carl to roost here. This is Allen's Landscaping, can't go there. If, if we can get approval for this, and get this, what I think is a really handsome-looking building built here, my neck, we have been talking to a bunch of subcontractor guys, trades guys in this area, about a building to be built, strapping both 14 and 15 here. It's about a 7,000 square foot building that we have in mind, so then that would get developed. And then the only remaining is these three lots here, which have been very popular for something, and, and would narrow down the ability for me to make sure he's not here, because everything else would be developed, and as soon as this were done, this were done, we'd ask for this, and there wouldn't be any place for him to put himself.
So what you're doing is you're opening undeveloped land, which has been sitting there for god knows how long, since 1998, and you gotta open it up. And that's what it was, that's what it was designed for, wasn't it?
Yeah, Bill. Okay. What about a fence?
Yeah, we'll have to do that.
We'd accept the condition that we're required to run a fence along the frontage to lots 12, 11, 12, and 13.
So there wouldn't be any point of access for Carl?
Yeah, 'cause what, what he does, he just comes across the street.
What was that?
They talked about a fence on Route 12 again?
Great, was it?
11, 12, and 13.
Well, you'd have to fence the whole perimeter though, right, to keep them out?
Oh, the Great Western, on Great Western, is that where?
What is he fencing it for?
I, I think-
So Carl isn't putting on boats there?
This project is gonna take a while to complete, and so if we throw a, uh, a condition on there, they can't sign off on the final occupancy and use until, so, so for the next two years, we'll have, you know, this whole over his head, so it's on permanent fence, but-
Yeah, well, I appreciate the concern, I, I guess I'm reluctant to put a condition outside this lot. I, I think it's not fair to the applicant to try to condition this, whatever we do on this lot, on things that are happening on other lots.
I, I agree to, to an extent, however, it's, it's the same business owner that owns the, the, the same four lots, so we're not putting it on this lot, we're putting it on the business owner who owns the lot. So I think it's certainly within our purview, and if Carl or anyone else wants to fight it, they can.
I don't know if we have that authority, I, I, I don't know what the law is on that, because we're-
We have to be afraid to do that.
We're basically extending our jurisdiction beyond the applicant's lot that's before us and saying, "He's gotta do something on other lots that aren't before the board now." I don't think we have that authority.
But it's an, I mean, bottom line is, it's an enforcement issue. These lots are not, the use of these lots is not the storage of boats. So boats have to go.
Of non-owners' boats.
Right, so I mean, if you really should enforce what the use of that property is.
Well, but wait a minute, maybe, I don't know.
The mechanism is already there.
May I make a recommendation?
We have to see what the permitted uses are in the IL zone.
I would just throw this out, and I may stand corrected. Those vehicles, those boats are in violation on your property.
That's right.
You, as a property owner, and I may stand corrected on this, you are covered under the Massachusetts general laws. To have those towed from the property at your expense, and the requirement is that you notify the police department that you have towed them. You may want to check with the police department here in Harwich. I may be incorrect, but you can get those off there since it is your property.
Well, you're right. I mean, there are mechanisms in place. For instance, you would send a notice that says, unless they're gone, you know, in a time limit, there's a, you know, it's something that the self-storage places use all the time. You know, you're not paying, you don't belong there. If you don't move them, we're gonna have sale, and we're gonna sell them. And you see those little ads in the classified section of the Cape Cod Times all the time. That's one mechanism. At least that doesn't involve litigation. You just send... The, and, you know, we'd be happy to do that. Tell them they gotta be gone. But, you know, it comes back to the issue, you know, a year or two from now, they start trickling back over there.
And you take the same action, and you say to your friend Carl, Carl, this is not Bill, your friend, speaking to Carl, my friend. This is the man in my job speaking to the guy in your job, and you need to get that stuff off my property.
And to Ms. Muller's point, I am not going to give up the future profitability income. I'm hoping to rent this building, not to sell it, over the nonsense we're dealing with with Carl.
Well, what we can do is give you a commitment that we will take that action. I think I agree with Chairman that I don't think it's an appropriate condition. But I'll give you a commitment that we will send a letter that tells him that if he doesn't move them under the state statute that allows us to sell it, we will sell them.
And you pick up the phone first and say, Carl, I hate like hell to do this, my friend, but this letter's coming your way.
We've done that innumerable time.
Mr. Evans?
Does it fit more than the boats? Because the accumulation of stuff has been, it keeps on sinking. It's been junk. And so I just ask if you could broaden the prohibition a little bit so that he's aware that it's not just boats.
Well, it'll be, it'll relate to all his property, not just the boats.
I would like to motion to close the hearing.
Got to close the public hearing, yes. Second?
Second.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, public hearing is closed. Mr. Hedustad?
I would like to make a comment, and then I'd like to propose that we do what I'm gonna tell you, what I'm gonna say. I think a great deal of thought has gone into what you're planning to do. I think because of the conditions of the property that's been subdivided there since 1998, you have begun to open what was intended in the first place. We don't, the town does not subdivide and allow subdivision on unbuildable lots and then put trash in there or allow people to use it for other than what was intended. Therefore, under this condition, I have no question but to either grant a variance, and we can come up with that, or say that it's a corner lot and let it go that way. One way or the other. I could care less, but I think that's the way we should proceed ASAP.
Well, I'd like to go with the variance. I think Mr. Capoli's position is reasonable. And whether the building commissioner thought of it or not, we don't know. But I think it's much cleaner for us to go with a variance. I would like to put a condition on that it be reasonably landscaped. You haven't talked about that, but I think you need to throw some landscaping to make it look a little bit better.
You think he's got it?
Is it on there, on the plan? I didn't see it, but...
I think it's on the green space down the bottom here, I think it is.
There's a tree.
We have, yeah, we have a requirement for green space.
Oh, is that what these things are, trees?
And it looks like he's got tree or hedge lines. Yeah, he's got trees.
Okay, scrub pines, I see.
I think you can justly rely on our reputation as a builder developer. I've got other properties here that I want to develop. I can guarantee you this will be good looking when it's done.
I know your homes are great. I just don't know, I'm not familiar with what you've done commerce, with the commercial structures.
Well, if you look, if you're on Route 137, the Dunkin' Donuts building and the subway building, Austin Road, those are Eastward Company's properties.
Okay, I didn't realize that, okay.
So we do work hard to make it attractive.
Okay, I appreciate that then. But I think you can see the sense of the board. I really urge you to sort of getting a little tougher to get these boats off there. Because it, I mean, we all went out there. We drive the properties beforehand. And it does look like an eyesore with those doggone boats there.
And you're correct.
Yeah. It, I mean, it would be better if they had to be there if somehow he could put them in a little rectangle with some shrubs around them to make it look more like a regular boatyard than just junk boats out there. Anyway, I would entertain a motion in this case.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The board hereby grants under case 2019-26, William Marsh Trust of the Deerfield Normandy Trust, a variance, a variance to reduce the required 50-foot setback on the lot to 25 feet to handle an existing building that is proposed in the documentations provided to this board.
But not existing, just proposed.
Right, proposed. This is based upon the applicant's submitted documents for the planned construction of a business steel building on a lot in a subdivision, which has been vacant for, since 1998. And that a variance is granted on the basis that the topography of the land and the shape of the land, the topography being it's right close to the wet land requirement, wetlands, it has a significant drainage problem. And therefore, and the shape creates a hardship for which a variance is granted in accordance with the state regulations.
Could I have a second, please? Mr. Capoli? Okay, any discussion? Ms. Muller?
No.
All right, Mr. Hedustad, anything further?
I think we are completely silent regarding your application to one of the commissioners.
Appeal the decision.
We've neglected, we've negated that argument completely. It's no longer an argument.
I think you're supposed to deny our application on that. We did it in the alternate.
I think as an alternate, we're just gonna grant you the variance. Yeah. Yeah, I think this case, as I said before, I think it's a unique piece of property. And because of the shape, I don't think realistically they can do a whole lot without a variance, which would establish the hardship. And certainly, there's no derogation to the intent of the bylaw, and it's not detrimental to the town in granting this variance. I think, as Tom Evans said, it's been an eyesore out there forever, and it's gonna be a nice addition to the development along Depot Road. So I think it's gonna be a nice project for the town.
Mr. Donahue?
Just regarding the senior health agent's letter to us regarding floor drains must be used discharged, no discharge to the ground, a leaching structure, or a septic system in accordance with the Board of Health floor drain regulations. That should eliminate any concern with regard to groundwater seeping into, this system actually seeping into the groundwater. Am I correct?
That's correct.
There is no plan to do any floor drains in this building.
Mr. Armstrong?
So there's not gonna be any washing of vehicles inside the building, huh?
The building is being designed for storage. In our research, that's what we found, is there's a great need for storage in this part of Harwich and just over the Dennis Line.
Mr. Capoli? Okay, I'll take a vote in the case. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, aye. Sorry, I forgot I was voting on this one. variance granted.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you. But do press the boat guy to clean up his act, if you would, please.
Before the town for other plans. So thank you very much.
Mr. Evans, thank you for your helpful comments.
Yeah, thanks, Tom.
Your attitude and the plans for return for building permits.
Lean on the code officials in town.
One in October and one in August, huh?
I lost my head.
Do you want me to do that?
No, I've got it.
Mr. Marsh, would you like any of the plans back?
Sure, we have deep plans. Thank you.
Hey, where do they get to number 13?
The lot?
Yeah, the lot. Doesn't that have smaller, is it a smaller lot?
We need to add this to my try to combine the first three lots we got.
Are you? Good. That's seven, eight, and nine, but what about 13? That's such a little tiny itty-bitty thing.
One step at a time.
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely.
There we go, we got to accept the minutes of the meeting here.
Okay, we got through that one. No, I didn't. When I saw the number one case, I knew we weren't coming out here in a hurry. Deerfield? Do we dispose of Deerfield? Yes, well, that's this one just did.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
So we're hanging on to...
Okay, the minutes.
I'll get it. There we go.
Minutes from our June 26, 2019 meeting. Any changes?
I didn't have any.
No? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve them as submitted by our secretary.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, minutes approved. We need to reorganize the board. Remember, we deferred it from last month. Regular members, Ms. Muller, Mr. Hedustad, Mr. Donahue. Anybody want to be the president or the clerk?
I'll take over the clerk job if you want.
Clerk, okay.
The word you're looking for is chair rather than president.
The clerk, the chair. Okay, well, you can be the president too, if you take the position.
No, thank you.
I'll call you Ms. President.
No, thank you, despite, no.
You want to listen to Mueller again?
All right, I'll do it for another year, but I'd like somebody eventually to become the chair, other than me. Can I nominate Jim Elliott?
Hey, perfect. He's not here. That's the way to...
Well, I know he won't do it. I've already talked to him.
Last conversation he and I had was he would do it for a year if I would agree to do it the next year, but I don't know how binding that is. I finally said, one thing I've learned in 70 years is to say no. And the second thing is especially to say no to handsome, charming guys.
Well, anyway, okay, so we need a motion to, I guess, nominate Mr. Hedustad as clerk, and I guess me as chair for the, but it's gotta be the regular members. Yeah.
I'll make a motion nominating David Ryer as the chair of the zoning board, and Dean Hedustad as the clerk.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
We had only one case apply for next, and now we have the continued case. So it should be a fairly easy meeting.
Just two cases, great. The first one is a special permit? Good. Although, right, the snow wind, I can never remember, Richmond Harbor, I guess is what they call it.
That's October.
That'll be October. That's probably gonna be an extended hearing, I guess. Although, I think the last time they were on, the neighbors did not come. I don't, because it's, if you've been on the property, it's way down and back. It's really away from the neighborhood.
There's been some...
Where the pool is, in the pool house.
That's it.
What's the word? Resistance?
No, some inquiry.
I'm sorry, the what?
There's been some public inquiry.
Oh, okay. Well, the piece was in the newspaper, that's why.
It's down there. Yeah, it's quite a ways away from everything.
It is.
But it was in the paper, wasn't it, this week?
I think that the concerns of neighbors include the fact that it's in the flood zone. So now it's gonna have to be elevated considerably. And you know how that changes your...
Well, it'll be conservation. Maybe that's why they delayed it until October.
They've got to change plans.
Yes. And that'll be the Conservation Commission.
Hey, I did not attempt to visit this property. Did you, Al? I felt like there was nothing that I could see that was gonna be enlightening to me.
Oh, you can drive. I didn't do it this time, because I remember from the last time, two, three years ago, I went down through and drove all around it.
It's really a significantly working of the whole...
It is. And I urge you, just if you ever went to Thompson's, you ought to just go in and drive and take a look at what they have done. I mean, they have done an incredibly magnificent job there. You're just telling you it's the zoning board, and it's a gated, you know, a gated community there. Okay, if there's no further...
Take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
I'll second it.
No, I think Mr. Armstrong was first in favor.
Aye.
Adjourned. Thank you all.